Welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee Meeting of March 14, 2019. At this time, I would take a motion to open the meeting.
So moved?
Moved by Gordon.
Second.
Seconded by Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's nice to see a good-sized audience tonight. So we have a public comment period, and it is not an open public forum. Speakers may address topics on the agenda, items specified for public comment, or items within the scope of the school committee's responsibility. Under Mass. General Law, the Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, governs public participation at open meetings, open committee meetings. The Open Meeting Law provides, "No person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after a clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting. And if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting." So I was wondering if there was anybody here for Public Comments section? And can you state your name, please?
Bill Pellegrino.
And would you be asking something that's on the agenda this evening?
Yeah, I actually wanted to speak about, because I saw on the agenda, student and faculty attendance is going to be discussed. So I just did this today, so this isn't very pretty. If anyone wants to take one of these, should pass around. I just made these notes because I spoke to, I'm sorry, I teach at Southeastern.
I forgot to mention one thing. So we need to limit our, the public speaking, just for like three minutes or so?
It'll be quick. It'll be quick. I spoke to my principal, who has worked the last couple of years to really improve our attendance. I know that it's a drastic issue here in East Bridgewater. We are in our 16th consecutive month of improved attendance. I'm sorry, I didn't make enough of those for everyone. Like I said, I did it quickly. I just have a list here of things that he has done, our administration has done, most of them at no cost, that can help improve attendance. I'll just quickly go through a few of the items on this list that I think he felt was really important. The biggest one that he mentioned to us was rules and procedures. Every school has a handbook. Are the procedures within that handbook, are they up to date? Are they actually followed? He found that they weren't when he came in, so he made a point to begin enforcing them immediately. Within weeks of his first year, he found improvements. He found that gradual implementation of procedures was the best approach, instead of just enforcing new rules all at once and making it very challenging for everyone. One thing at a time, one big thing at a time. The next big thing that he did was establish greater communication with families. He explained to me, he felt that there are three types of families. There's the type where the kid goes to school no matter what, the type where the kid goes to school unless they're really ill, and the type where if the kid doesn't feel like going, they don't go. So he wanted to put a strong focus on changing the mindset of the community, of the parents and the students and the teachers alike. Students have to go to school. It's not a decision that people get to make. It's valuable, it's necessary, it prepares you for life. And he and the other staff at Southeastern have this conversation with the community. He also shares data. Actually, the budget meeting, I got an email that day indicating that it was our, February was our 16th month of improved attendance for both students and faculty. So I don't have much else to say about student attendance, but there are a few things about faculty attendance. Most of the things that we do at Southeastern would cost money. I know that's an issue for us here in East Bridgewater. We have long-term disability insurance. We just started getting that. I guess it was low cost to the district. Sorry, I don't know any numbers, but if we build up to a 90-day cap on sick days, we don't have to pay for it. I know, I'll give you a day, Monday. Monday, I didn't feel too well. I didn't really feel much like going into school on Monday, but I did, because I want to build up to that cap. It's an incentive to get going, and it seems like it's really working. The last thing is, we know EB has a morale problem. I feel that Southeastern doesn't. We have several reasons for that, but one last thing I'd like to mention about that is we have this thing called flex time. If we have prep first, we have prep last, we can come in late, we can leave early. That's another thing that, depending on how it's used, is at no cost to the town, or it doesn't have too much of an impact, except for those times when you need teachers there to cover, to do other things, of course, that we must be there for those as well. So that's all I want to say about that. It's some ideas, things to think about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take that under advisement.
Thank you. Can I ask just one, or one more comment, one more question? I assume that we will find out when we have this discussion about attendance, but I know that some of the teachers were wondering if the report on staff absences, if that includes everything, like maternity leave, long-term leave, family medical, personal days, PD, and is it all staff, or is it just focusing on certain groups? Just, I don't know.
It's everybody.
Okay.
And it's everything.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, we have a student here from the Student Advisory Council, Matt Condon. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Matt.
Hi, Matt.
So next week up at the high school is the start of March Madness Week, and it will run all week. The spirit days for the week are as follows. Monday is Patriotic Day, Tuesday is Character Day, Wednesday is Tourist Day, Thursday is Outer Space Day, and Friday is Class Color Day. Key Club is hosting the Mystery EBHS Competition next Friday, March 22nd, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Foreign Language Honor Society just hosted a successful Foreign Language Week. Students who participated watched a movie, they participated in small discussions, and they had a food fair with traditional Spanish and French foods. The freshman class is hosting their class lock-in tomorrow night, March 15th. It's the same lock-in that I mentioned last month, it just got postponed. It will start at 10:00 PM and it'll end at 6:00 AM on Saturday morning. Drama students will be performing The Addams Family on Friday, March 29th, and Saturday, March 30th, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Students in DECA competed at the Massachusetts State DECA Conference on March 7th through March 9th. EB had five students placed in the top 10 in their respective categories. Mrs. O'Brien, the club advisor, was personally recognized at the conference for her support of business students and the club. Some music students will be attending the Senior Semesba Festival next Friday, March 22nd, and for athletes, spring sports start on Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And this evening, we have Mrs. Sarson, grade 7 science teacher, and Mrs. Megan Kruger, grade 7, 8 science teacher, to take grade 8, 9, and 10 students on an out-of-country trip to Costa Rica during the 2020 April break. And welcome.
Thank you. We're back again. We want to go early this year.
Yeah.
All right. We are looking, as it says on the little itinerary that I put into everybody's seat, that we would be leaving Boston and flying to San Jose, Costa Rica, and then taking about a two-and-a-half-hour ride to a place called Monte Verde, which is about a mile high up in the mountains, to the cloud forest. And we would be doing that first night, a night hike. A lot of the hikes that we'll be doing will be at night, because the animals that we want to see and the flora and the fauna comes out at night. So we'll be keeping the kids up really late this year. We are staying at a place called the Eco Lodge, and that is our home base for four nights. On the second day, we will be traveling to Monte Verde, to a coffee plantation, and doing some afternoon exploring in a town called Santa Elena, which is a historical and cultural center. On day three, we will go ziplining. I'm terrified of this, but I'm gonna do it. That's how we're going to start our day. And then in the afternoon, we're going to Orinol Volcano, and we're gonna soak in the hot tubs, which will calm my nerves after we're done. And again, that night, we're going back to the volcano. Oh, Orinol is a volcano, so we are going back there that night to take a night hike. And in the following morning, on day four, we're going again back to Orinol, but we will do a geology hike, where they will show us all about the strata of the volcano, what the rocks are, when it last erupted, and so forth. In the afternoon, they're gonna put us to work. We're going to go to an organic farm, and we're going to help them with some of their projects that are there. We're gonna get our hands dirty, as it says, and in the afternoon, we'll continue there, but we will cook our own meals. We're going to do an authentic local dish. Don't know what it is yet, but that's what the plan is. And we will eat it too, so we better do a good job. Following day, we're gonna get a little relaxation, I suppose you can call it, and go whitewater rafting. And I don't know how long it is, but it's gonna be fun. Get a little wet, have a good time. We'll be in the jungle, so it should be warm. We will have a group dinner that night, and we will be looking at bats. And those are Honduran white bats. And so we'll learn all about the bats that are in the rainforest. And then that night, we'll be, again, back in the rainforest, taking a hike. Day six, we're going to go to a school, and we will visit with the local kids and lunch with them. We'll do a project at the school. In the afternoon, we're going to this rainforest research base, where we will work with some of the local scientists, again, talking about the flora and fauna of this area. That night, we're going to go for a frog walk, and looking for all the frogs that we can find. We'll spend some time at the research center again, and we will overnight at the research base. Following day, we will get up and we will go up in the sky again, for a tram ride, and it will be through the canopy of the rainforest. And when we do get down, we'll be setting up a study area for the local research base, and doing some frog research studies. We'll be doing some sound recordings, and again, back at night. We will travel back to San Jose for day seven, and, yep, that was day seven, and we'll do a city tour of San Jose, and have some free time to spend exploring and doing some shopping. And then we'll do another Red Eye Home. That is our plan for next year. Any questions?
Wow. That's ambitious.
Yeah, they'll keep us busy again.
That is ambitious.
Looks like a great trip.
Yeah.
It looks phenomenal.
Thank you. We think it's gonna be pretty exciting.
Definitely.
And at this time, I would take a motion to approve the out-of-country trip to Costa Rica in 2020.
So moved.
Seconded by Teresa, seconded by Hazel.
Liz, are you okay with this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just looking for the sign-off, the principal, or, did we set that up, so they needed to sign off on it?
The principal does.
It should be there.
Oh, I see, down the bar.
At the bottom of the third page.
Got it. Thank you.
You do really? You get to do all this stuff?
Do we have a cost to that?
We had a...
Thirty-four eighty-nine.
We had a motion by Teresa, seconded by Hazel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a great time.
We'll be back in April to talk about California. Have a good night.
When will they, when will the parent meeting and stuff be for this? It's not till later, right?
Probably do that again in April or May. We get back from our trip, we'll be back to La Cia in April, so, yeah, so probably May. We'll keep you guys posted.
All right, thanks.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
And at this time, I would open the public hearing for school choice for 2019, 2020. Under the school, under the school choice law, every city, town, or regional school district is required to enroll nonresidents under the school choice plan unless the school committee votes prior to June 1st not to participate for the following school year. The East Bridgewater School Committee will take oral and written testimony on the above-listed topic from all interested citizens and staff. Currently, there are 45 students participating in school choice in grades 7 through 12. There are three grade 7 students, five grade 8 students, four grade 9 students, and nine grade 10 students, 13 grade 11, and 11 grade 12 students, and there's materials enclosed.
I'll make a motion to open.
Okay, then I take a motion to, motion to open.
Second.
Motion by Teresa, seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.
And any discussion?
I actually have just one quick question. If your district, not that I would do this, but if a district votes not to accept choice, like say we didn't accept school choice in, can our students still choice out, or is it reciprocal?
You can go out.
Okay.
We don't have to take the students. I just, just let you know, we're gonna take students in grades 7, 9, and 11, because our other groups are 8, 10, and 12. Enrollment's very high. So I want parents to know, we'll do the best that we can to get, to keep the 45, but I also look at class size as we bring these kids in, and we've had some classes with high enrollment in different areas, so I want to make sure that we're doing right by what we have here. So we take, we look at it closely, but I just want to let you know that we did look at the enrollments in all of the grades in 7, 9, and 11. We'll take some school choice.
And is the, whatever our vote is today, tonight, yea or nay, even if it's nay, it just means no new students can be added. Does current students stay no matter what? Once they're with us, they're with us.
Right.
Right, okay.
And just real quick, what's the net, I mean, how many students are coming in versus how many students do we have in East Bridgewater that are opting to exercise choice?
Forty-five.
Are in.
Are in.
Forty-five are in, but one year, or out?
It's almost about the same.
Okay.
So at this time?
So wait a minute, can I just ask something to that? So adding in isn't gonna touch our class sizes, 'cause it's kinda netting out to the same.
Right, but I don't want to add.
Oh, no, I totally agree. I don't want to add parity to our class sizes. They're already too high.
I did have one, we may have one request. We have a, maybe a possible sibling from another area district. One goes here, the family may want both to come. And that would be outside of that 7, 9, and 11, but it would, it would help the parents, transportation-wise and things like this, so.
So the grades that you identified?
7, 9, and 11.
What's the cap? How many, how many new students can we bring in?
I have that information. I think, I think 7th grade was, I want to say three, I think it was three across the board, like...
Three and eight. Okay.
I think it was maybe 3, 3, and 4, something like that. So, but we'll look at it.
Eleven are graduating.
Right, we're losing 11, so we're not gonna pick up more than 11.
Right. We're gonna take more than 11. So I think it was like 3, 3, 5, or 2 fours and 3.
So at this time, I would make a motion, or take a motion to approve school choice?
Second.
Let me hear here for school choice. It's a big crowd.
Well, I guess I moved it.
Take a motion.
Second by you wanted.
Is that Michael?
All in favor?
Whoever.
Aye.
Aye.
And next up, we have superintendent's corner.
Yep. So I just wanted to make sure that, that everybody understands student attendance is part of the accountability system. We saw it on the presentation last week for DESI, so we are gonna be really looking at student attendance over the next several years, getting kids here on time. 7 through 12, you know, as kids get older, you know, they tend to maybe some walk in a little bit later, and, but there's, there's different ways, and we heard tonight, that there's incentives for kids too, as well. And I think that, I know that our new assistant principal, Tara Neuwies, has some good ideas about this going forward. So we'll be looking at this, along with the behavior specialists work with the kids, to increase the attendance. I think it's important for kids to come to school. I think it's important for us to get them here, and how do we get them here? What do we need to do on our end? Really, the, some of the things I'm not gonna bring up about faculty attendance is, we do have maternity leaves, we do have, we do have some long-term illness right now. We have some personal time that people use. We have four, we have two A-days and two B-days. And really, what I just wanted to bring up about teacher absences is that it's hard for us to get substitutes, and it's hard across the board. A lot of districts are having trouble getting substitutes. I do feel at some point that I'd like to come to the board. We're looking at subpay. Do we increase it? What does it look like? Do we go to having more subs in the district, full-time? We used to do that, you know, years ago in a different district where I, where I even taught, we had five building subs. What's the price of that? What's the cost of that? Is it effective? Is it an efficient process? How is it used? We have, we have an issue, and we need to address the issue. So I'm going to be looking at different ways of addressing the issue, whether we increase the, the sub daily rate, whether we try to keep, you know, when we do a long-term illness, what does that look like after, you know, is it a set rate for the first 15 days, and then 15 to 30 days, does it go up, and 30 to 45 days, does it go up? Those are, those are ways of looking at it. We could do incentives for teachers. That's not out of, that's not out of the, out of the realm of possibility to talk about. I just, you know, when I look at, when I look at our subrate and what we, what we paid out last year, we're over $150,000 in substitutes. We had maternity, we've had long-term illness, we've had sickness, and we have personal. That money could be used in different ways. It could be used for incentives, it could be used for building subs, it could be used in multiple different ways. I'm just bringing it to your attention now, because we're gonna start to look at it, you know, maybe do a five-year plan of how, you know, what does it look like next year, what does it look like the following year, and really just take a look at what other districts are doing. It's not just one school in the district. It's, we have three, we have three schools. We have pre-K through 12. So usually at the central school, at Mitchell School, we see a lot of maternity. We have some long-term illness, but that's where you'll see a lot of your maternity, is usually in the younger grades. Young moms, young dads. We have, I'm sure if he had his, if they had their child yesterday, he didn't have it yesterday, oh, they had it today?
Uh, no. Yesterday or the day before. Mr. Bellargian?
He didn't have it.
Yeah, they had a little girl.
Oh, they did? Oh. So, and, and we also offer for dads, paternity leave. So I just want to look at things differently, whether it's incentives for our teachers, whether it's getting building subs, but we need to do something. It's very difficult for the principals to cover for each other. It's hard for, to cover. If we have a PD going on, if we have IEP meetings going on, you know, we cannot not have a certified special education teacher, not in a room with students with IEPs. We just can't continue to do those things. And Mr. Phelan would tell us that. We just can't continue to do those things. So I wanted to bring it to your attention, you know...
Well, aren't we using AIDS a lot?
That's what I mean.
Because we don't have them, and that's giving us problems, or potentially could.
But, but we...
We don't want to do that. No, exactly. That's my point.
And we're having trouble getting subs. I know that...
I'm supporting your point, Liz.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think Dr. Williams is, yesterday, four, three or four...
Three new ones for some.
Three new subs. They're, you know, as, as May comes along, end of April, early May, we usually, some college students graduating that have their certificate, want to get out there, want to get their name out there, want to see, you know, start subbing in districts. So we hope that, we usually see some, a few Bridgewater State especially come up in May. So that's good. We usually, and that's, that's, you know, people had, do have personal days, and it's okay to take personal time. I'm not saying it's not.
What do you like to see for an average number on the sub list? Because don't you have a list, basically, that we can call through?
So this year, actually, we just went through the information the other day. We have signed on about 72 subs since the start of the school year. However, we only have now the new three ones that have been added. We had, up until yesterday, we had 27 who were actively accepting positions on a, on a regular basis. And that means that they have accepted a position within the last 30 days. So based on that, we've kind of cleaned up the list, and now have 30 active substitutes on the list. And to the superintendent's point, you know, I think those 70-plus people are still substituting. It's just districts are getting more creative in how they're going to lure them into their district as opposed to ours. And I think, you know, some incentive of them committing to our district, knowing that, you know, after substituting X number of days in our district, they may see a little bit of a bump up. And some of them, it's, it's small increments, you know, only a couple of dollars, but still enough of an incentive for them to be committed to one district as opposed to another.
So Liz, Gina, when you put together your plan to address both categories of absenteeism, faculty as well as students, I'm sure at that point in time, you'll also give us the history, so we have something to compare to.
Yeah.
Okay? Over the last three or five years, here's the numbers, and here we are. Now, as we build into this program, we can see the change.
Yeah, it's financial. You know, we spent $153,000 last year on substitutes, and that includes PD, that, that includes people going, being out of the district for the day, and we had to get a substitute. So it could have been on a PD, it could have been maternity, it could have been a long-term illness, it could have been whatever it is. But we're up to $98,000 right now. So that, to me, is a signal to me, that I need to look at things differently, do some things differently, and sort of map something out. So at this point, you know, I'm gonna be looking at it. I'm willing to let people, you know, those were great suggestions. We've already started talking about incentives. It's hard for our assistant principals and principals to cover their buildings. You know, the principals have to talk to each other on a daily basis now. We've given them access to ASOP, so that they talk to each other. With, if there's a professional development day in the district, or there's something going on, they have to call each other to see if they can let three people go, and what's happening here, and what's happening at Mitchell and Central, and what's happening at Central and Mitchell and the junior senior high school. How many people out? But if you, this is a big building, so you could have upwards between 8 to 13 on a bad day. Tara, right? Mrs. Neuwies, yeah. So, I mean, that's a lot of teachers. So then, you know, you're putting groups of kids, trying to, you know, put them in a big area. I don't want that either. I don't want kids just, you know, I don't want them unsupervised. At the central school, they, sometimes I think, I think they, if there's a third-grade teacher out, she doesn't have, I'm sorry, second-grade teacher out, and she doesn't, and Mrs. Byrne doesn't have a sub, they sort of, and there's two other second-grade teachers, they'll group the kids, you know, you seven go here, and you seven go here. Or we send Dr. Williams down to teach second grade. So, that's my incentive.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I think, let alone the financial burden, there's also a learning burden. Kids don't obviously learn as well with a substitute. We all know, we've all had subs in our lifetime, we're not, I'm not gonna...
Right.
And for kids with social emotional issues, that change or transition can often be a really difficult day for them. So any incentive we can do... So, any incentive we can do to, you know, I mean, people get sick, and that's fine, but...
We also have, you also have, you know, parents who are coming in for meetings.
Right, IEPs.
IEP meeting, to meet with us, and the teacher needs to be in those meetings, so you take the teacher out during those types of meetings, then you have to have a sub. But if we've got eight absences for sickness, and then, and Mr. Phelan, Mr. Phelan is running IEP meetings all day, now you're taking another teacher who could have covered, maybe covering, out of that situation. So, we need to look at it differently, I'm going to look at it differently, I've asked other districts, I'm glad that Southeastern doesn't have this, but across, across the state, and across many of the regions that I speak to, this is, this is a problem.
Is, is the number of days of faculty absences increasing? Is that why this is becoming a problem?
I don't know if it's increasing, John, that's what, one of the things I'm looking at right now, I'm going back for the data, we have a new system in place, makes it much easier, when I first came, we were still doing a lot of things by writing stuff down, now we have the Aesop system, when we took this over, so I've got some cumulative data, I'm looking at the data, you know, I want to come up with, I want to come up with a program that works, whether incentivize or, I don't know.
Where does the money for subs come from?
Our budget. I'm just kidding.
What, what little pool does it come out of?
There's three items in the budget for subs.
And are we approaching what has been budgeted for them?
Yeah.
Is that why we're concerned?
We're, we're a hundred and fifty-three, a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars last year.
Yeah.
And what do we budget this year, John?
Hundred and fifty.
We kept, so we kept it consistent, but we're already at ninety-eight, and we've got...
Ninety-eight, eight-fifty.
Half of March, April, May, so we basically have almost four months left. You don't, John, I'm not going to put you on the spot, because if you don't know, I would be fine with that, but do you know where it was about at the same point last year? I know you probably didn't have time to get that number, I'm sure, but...
I don't.
I'm just curious.
I can let you know.
I'm just curious if we're, you know...
And, you know, this comes...
Budget issue.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's budget season, so we're looking at everything, and there's, you know, where can we save, what can we do, what can we incentivize, what can, what can we do differently as a district, looking at faculty, staff, and students? How do we model for each other? You know, that's part, that's always part of, of schools, of districts, teachers, we model, if we're here, it's important, the expectation is as important, but it also, on the district's end, not just the classroom teacher, we need to make sure that we're providing enough substitutes, because, you know, sickness happens, maternity, you know, I'm not going to have a mom come in, you know, three days after her baby's born, no, I mean, we don't, we're not doing that, so...
Do we have any better luck with long, like, like a maternity situation, like with long-term substitutes?
Yes.
Are those easier to come by, obviously, than the day-to-day?
Yeah.
Because they know they're going to be.
Right, and that can be a contributing factor, that, you know, there's a lot more job opportunities for people than there were a number of years ago, so we don't have as many people that are available to kind of come in one day here, one day there, whereas if they know they have something long-term to rely on, and as the superintendent said, you know, years ago, we had building-based subs that reported every day, so then we could kind of sort them as needed, you know, obviously, that then ties in benefits and all those other things, once they become a full-time employee, so...
But, I mean, you know, that's, you got to weigh the cost-benefit.
As, as the minimum wage rises, it's becoming, people want to go elsewhere, because they're making more money elsewhere.
Well, and there's a teacher shortage, I mean, we, we know that.
Have you thought about reaching out to Bridgewater, their education department?
We did, we do. Dr. Williams has a good relationship with them, she talks with them constantly, we go down there for the, she'll be down there for their open house in a couple of weeks. We put it out to everybody, and, but all districts are, I mean, I mean, the size of Brockton, which is twenty minutes up the road, twenty-five minutes, not even, you know, we're about the same in pay rate, I think it's seventy-five dollars a day, she's about, Brockton's right around there, but they'll probably pool forty, fifty teachers, you know, I mean, they, a day, you know, they'll, they'll take fifty subs, you know, so if the, if the pool in the South Shore is three hundred, you know, they've got fifty of them up there. So, we've got to, we've got to look at something different. So, that's all, I just wanted to bring it up, that, you know, our expectation is that everybody comes to school every day, students, faculty and staff, however, there is illness. This evening, Mr. Duffy has the flu, he did call me late yesterday, or early yesterday, and he's, he's homesick, it happens. The flu went through Central School, seventy-five students out two weeks ago, and then throughout the day, we sent another twenties home, and teachers started getting sick. So, we even had it here in this building, and I even had Mr. Ortenzi come down and chlorox our, our office, and the other morning, and put all the windows up, before anybody came in. So, knock on wood, and sick way far away from Dr. Williams. I did not get the flu, but I got the flu shot.
We have the Sidney Craven Memorial Fund coming up newsletter in our packet.
The Sidney Craven run, a lot of fun, they are big advocates of our school, they are at a lot of our functions, they want to be part of the solution in this, in the town, for lots of things, they're supporters of the schools, we want to support them, but their fourth annual 5K Tutu Run and Sparkle Fest, Saturday, June fifteenth to nineteenth, from nine AM to noon.
For the Tutu.
Or at least something pink.
Right. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This event looks like a very fun event. Says our registration opens on March first at nine AM. Race day onsite registration is thirty-five dollars, and kids registration ages seven to twelve years old is twelve dollars, and that is, let's see, so the registration opening on March first includes an official race tee-shirt, race bib, and post-race refreshments. Adult early bird special prize from March first to March thirty-first, twenty-five dollars, and adult prize starting April first is thirty dollars. All children under twelve may run with a registered adult for free, but they will not receive a race tee-shirt or bib. There's going to be, oh, fun activities, DJ with music and dancing, bouncy houses, face painting, balloon animals, arts crafts, arts and crafts, and more.
Everybody's on board.
Cupcake decorating is one of the events that sounds fun, with some tasty little Thank you. And next up, we have strategic plan number two, social-emotional, we have Mrs. Karen Clifford and Ms. Tara Noyes, welcome.
Come on, thank you. Hi, Miss... Presentation, I feel like I was just here, just reported in December, so it's really just a recap, and what we finished. Oh, I hope I didn't staple everything upside down.
Done the same.
So, I did?
I've done it too.
So, this year, we did a parent education series, that was new, I talked briefly about it in December, so we have completed many of the presentations. There was an additional package, this paperclip that I left at your spot, that includes all of the handouts that we provided at all of the parent speakers, on speaking presentations, so I just wanted you to get a sense of what parents walked away from the presentation with, as handouts. All the presentations are uploaded on the guidance website, on the guidance page under presentations. So, if anybody that wasn't able to attend, or anybody that did attend that wants to refer back, all of the information is on the website, and the handouts are there, just for your knowledge, so that you know what was put out. We also, this year, did social-emotional presentations to students in grade seven and eight, all students received presentations on self-esteem, resilience, planning and prioritization, emotional control, and social thinking, and we have to wrap up the rest of the task initiation, which will hopefully be done this month, before we go into the MCAT season. The next page, we have some orientation and transition work that we've done for the seventh grade, incoming seventh grade students, we're going to continue with having guidance counselors go down the last term of the year, and spend some time in the sixth-grade classrooms, become a familiar face for those students. That was very helpful this year for students, to just have another person that they could recognize, in addition to the, the three or four other small group presentations that we'll do with the students, and then new this year, or, another thing we're continuing this year, is the seventh-grade student orientations, I tried to spread them out across the summer last year, to spend a half-day up at the building, touring, doing lockers, and other transition work, to get the students comfortable with the building, the middle months were not as, they were not attended, they were canceled, so this year, because hopefully we're going to get out so early with no snow days, I plan on doing the week after school gets out, so I'm looking, well, maybe two weeks at this point, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, June twenty-fifth, sixth, and seventh, so that information is all going out in the little Vikings handbook. Last year, it was well-attended, the other two, and it's limited to fifty spots a day, so I look forward to good presentation, good attendance, and another presentation that we're going to do that's new this year, is I'm going to put together an incoming seventh-grade parent orientation, to go over that same information with parents, that the students get, because once I did the orientation last year, I got a lot of questions from parents regarding what the students had learned, so I'm going to do that presentation for parents. I'll continue with the ninth grade, rising ninth grade orientation, that will be on Wednesday, October, August twenty-first, and we'll cover those other transitionary skills that we've done in the past.
Is that going to be at Stone Hill again?
Sorry?
Stone Hill again?
So, I think we're going to try to look at Bridgewater...
Close on.
Or, or Stone Hill, only because the chief complaint that I got from the students, and I think I've mentioned this in the past, is that it's, the day is actually longer than the school day, and school hasn't even started, so that is, that's a tough sell for them. So, I thought if we get a little closer, and shorten the day a little bit, that it wouldn't, that would be more well-attended, and that's what we're hoping with. So, our ongoing initiatives is that we're going to continue with our summer reading theme for the community and the district, that topic, I think, is still being voted on, to be determined. The advisory mentoring that guidance has been working on is going to go, hopefully, into its third year next year, so then all grades will be matched up, and some grades will have had two years in the mentoring program. We're going to obviously continue our curriculum work to integrate and identify social-emotional competencies across the district, and we're continuing with our health and wellness curriculum review, and developing a trauma-sensitive advisory team. The next two pages are information regarding the discipline referrals, so Ms. Anderson put this together for me, as she always does, and the beautiful graph, and from January to March of last year compared to this year, our discipline referrals have decreased by thirty-one percent. And the next page are in-school and out-of-school suspensions, same timeframe, January to March of last year compared to this year, they have decreased by twenty-three percent. The next page is my stats on the EB Kin, I, I know that Chief Allen keeps the best stats, but what I have, from, when the program started, from January of two thousand seventeen to May of two thousand seventeen, we received thirty-one referrals. The entire school year, from June thirty, or the entire fiscal year, I guess, from June thirtieth of seventeen to June twentieth of eighteen, we had fifty-five, and then that July first to...
Wow.
Yesterday, or Monday, we've had a hundred and two referrals. So, we've seen a big increase, I think we're getting better at spotting and detecting things, also, I know the last time I spoke to the chief, the, the issues regarding mental health in the community is on the rise.
Right, there's actually an article in the, in the Enterprise today.
It's everywhere, it's not just in the school, it's out of the schools.
Yeah, there was an article today that said, what was it, three hundred and fifty calls, John, over a year period, just for mental health.
My question to that would be, of course, is, is it that the incidences are on the rise, or our ability to identify them is on the rise?
I think it's a little bit of both, to be honest. I know that this year alone, we've had students hospitalized, and we have thirty-one documented cases of students with social-emotional diagnoses in the building. So, it's, so some of that is our ability to detect, some of it is our ability to...
Can you say that again, Karen?
We've had ten students hospitalized this year, and we have thirty-one students with documented social-emotional disabilities.
What qualifies as a social-emotional disability? In general, not, I'm, don't...
So, anxiety, all level of anxiety, depression, combination of both, it would not be an ADHD, and it would not be a learning disability.
School phobia would be another.
And, and what if somebody has both? Where do they fall in this reporting? Are they... I'm just curious, I, I don't know the answer to the question, okay?
Well, is that a, is that a question for the counselors, or for the police department? I'm not really sure, because I...
No, I'm talking about how we're classifying school data, are we, if a child has ADHD and anxiety, both diagnosed, would they be in that thirty-one, or...
I think it would depend on what was the primary.
Correct.
So, if the ADHD was the primary concern, then it would fall into that category, but
we definitely have thirty-one students whose primary concern is social, is an emotional disability.
Yeah, correct, it's a, it's a team decision, and as the team meets, they will give a primary disability, as well as a secondary disability. So, there may be a primary disability of, say, anxiety, that falls under, educationally, when we look at the categories, it, it falls under an emotional disability. When you look at ADHD, that may also be comorbid, they call, and that happens quite commonly, as they run comorbid, the secondary disability might be a health disability, or ADHD, or another health disability, but generally, you look at what the primary disability is, and that impacts, so when Ms. Clifford's talking about thirty-one, she's talking about thirty-one that have a primary disability of emotional.
And it's impacting their ability to access education, requiring an IEP, so we could have other students who have a diagnosis, however, they're making effective progress.
They're making effective progress, and you may, you may actually have students who are undiagnosed at this point in time as well, I mean, to be quite frank.
Nice check.
So, in light of the fact that Mr. Duffy is home with the flu...
Yeah, I, I asked Mrs. Clifford to come in and talk about the AP courses here at the junior, senior high school, she is the director of guidance, she's been here at the high school for, for years now, she does the entire district, however, she still works on this at the high school with Mrs. Noyes. Mr. Duffy is sick, but I did want you to know that I have let him know that he'll be coming on April eleventh, he needs to come to the school committee, and he will talk about some other AP data that he has, some other thoughts that he has, some course selections, but Karen's going to talk to the AP courses, I know that with some questions the other night, and I know there's some questions that'll be tonight, I'm sure, but if you, if you hear something, you know, raise your hand, I think some people are here for the AP courses. Do we have anybody here that wants to hear about the AP courses? Anybody here? Go ahead, Karen, you're on.
Okay, so I just put together this chart that shows for the school year of seventeen, eighteen, we, we ran nine AP courses, for this year, the school year of eighteen, nineteen, we ran ten, because we added AP Chemistry, and next year, our intent for nineteen, twenty is to run eleven by adding AP European History. Next year also signifies the AP US History running as only a one-year class. We also have had students in our building, in our district, over the years, that have been competitive students, that have worked independently with faculty members, to participate in AP French, AP Calc BC, AP Computer Science, AP Music Theory, AP Physics Part C, and AP Psych testing. So, even though we've not run those specific courses, we have faculty that are willing to work with students, and help them achieve and participate in those testing areas.
Can you, because it's up in front here, AP History, the US One and US Two, could you discuss that, please?
So, since I've been here for seven years, this is my third school district I've worked in, this is the only district that I've ever seen it run as a two-year course, in the seven years that I've been here, it has run as a two-year class, there is one test that's taken at the end of the second year. So, Mr. Duffy polled, I believe, nineteen neighboring communities... taken at the end of the second year. So Mr. Duffy polled, I believe, 19 neighboring communities in the South Shaw area, and there's one other school besides our district that runs it as a two-year class. Everybody else runs it as a one-year class. That, that is the typical. So I think that when he was looking at that data, as well as the ability to add additional, an additional history option for students, to give them two as opposed to one, is how we got to this, to the reduction, so that we are more in line with the other districts, so that our students are equally as competitive with those other districts and not having, carrying two years for one.
Karen, I know the concern of some parents with having it changed from two years to one, was that that was an AP offering, the first year of APUSH?
Yeah.
Was an AP offering that sophomores can take.
Sophomores.
Is there anything else with the AP designation? I mean, people who are concerned about this are obviously concerned about what a college application is going to look like. Is there anything else AP for sophomores, or are courses even offered normally for, at the sophomore level for kids in other schools?
So I think for students at other schools, it's typically if they run the two-year program, so there would be one other school in this community. I have not polled all of the schools to see what other offerings they might have. I know in the past, we have had some sophomores that have taken AP stats that have been advanced. They have been advanced students. So they could take an AP stats with lead teacher approval, with the right prerequisite, right coursework behind them.
So parents who are concerned if there aren't any official offerings, that, that would be one avenue for them to-
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Duffy would probably have that information, like data, for us on here.
Yeah, he would have probably further data.
And I, at the public hearing, I misspoke. It's not condensing part one and part two into one year. They'll still have AP US History 1 as a sophomore, but it'll be at the honors level, with the opportunity to take it at the AP level for part two. So we're not taking both parts and putting them into one year.
So the kids aren't doing US 1 and 2 in one year?
Right.
Just like they have not been now.
Yeah.
Right, but instead of both being an AP, one is an honors, and then you move into- Right. We were essentially giving them credit two years in a row for one course.
Course, yep.
That makes sense. Does anybody else have any questions?
Gina, thank you for clearing that up. I was confused about that. That seemed like an awful information.
And I had a good execution.
Right. And then the last slide is just about the course selection process that we've entered. I know that we just finished parent-teacher conferences, so I'm hopeful that parents have had an opportunity to speak to teachers. Teachers are starting to make, if they have not made recommendations, they're making them, and students are starting to enter their recommendations, including their electives. The deadline for students to complete that process is March 22nd. That will give guidance counselors a week to pull together the information, and then we're going to schedule individual student meetings with all of the students, so that guidance counselors can have individual conversations and talk about the student's four-year plan, if they're an incoming freshman, their graduation requirements, so that everybody's on the same page and sort of map out what that process looks like for course selections.
And that's just a 9 through 12. Eats, don't need to worry about that, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in a couple months.
Thank you.
Ms. Noiz, I don't, we've, we've introduced you.
Yes.
So Ms. Noiz, our assistant principal here at the junior senior high school, she brought along, she brought along with her a student representative, Beth Pennington, this evening, and they will be talking about an initiative that they have for the district. And it's going to be K through 12, and it'll be 7 through 12 right now, but we talked to our principals the other day, and the principals liked the idea that Beth and her friends got a bully initiative and gave us ribbons that they made over the weekend, and we're all going to start wearing them, and they're going to start passing them out. But we're going to buy some bracelets for PK, PK through 6.
And this also happens to be the One Voice Initiative?
The One Voice Initiative.
So as Beth is handing out our little handouts, together as part of the new coalition, or as a member of the coalition now, E-Hope and One Voice, we have gone through, every month has been a theme, and this month is bullying, the topics of bullying. East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School with One Voice is taking action this month in the month of March, to put together a beginning stage of what we would like to continue on for bullying here at the school, as well as in our communities, K through 12. And as we go through this, the first step that we have done is focused in on working together with the high school students and the One Voice Town Coalition program. Our overarching goal is to help students understand the importance of positive self-esteem, as well as decreasing the act of bullying and cyberbullying. With this in mind, our One Voice, the Town Coalition, picked the focus of bullying for the month of March. We are starting the activities along with March Madness next week, and we had one of our freshman young ladies, Beth Pennington, who took great initiative, totally on her own. And this is one of the beauties of my job, that I get to work with students that all of a sudden have this growth within themselves to really take a hold of something and run with it. And she's really done a great job putting this together, this campaign for our community. It is called Rise Up Against Bullying. The first day that we'll have our first activity is March 19th, Anti-Bullying and Cyberbullying Day. The students will view the same video that you're going to see today, that Beth has put together in the cafeteria, and then we will be handing out the blue contracts that I gave to you all, or Beth gave to you. And we will ask the students to sign them, acknowledging these five important bullets to us. Then we have had a big banner made. Mr. Chilcott and his gang in the CAD department did a great job. They're working on the banner as we speak, and did a lot of posters for Beth and her crew, that they have been busily hanging up along the, the school. The blue ribbons that you have now, Beth and a, how many, like-
Nine.
Nine other students stayed at her house along with her mom to get these ribbons hot glued and pinned for everyone to get one in school. So they really worked very hard. And then the last piece would be a cyber challenge, where we're going to ask the students at lunch for the entire rest of the day to do all positive messages to each other on social media and take the negativity away as much as we possibly can. So at this point, Beth would like to say a few things, and then we can watch her amazing video that she's put together.
So I knew that this was, that March was bullying month, and I wanted to come up with an idea about anti-bullying that everyone could kind of connect to. So I came up with this song, and it's by, it's by Andra Day called Rise Up. And in the song, there's different anti-bullying scenarios and bullying scenarios that show people rising up to bullying and how they would deal with that situation. And then there's also people doing random acts of kindness and just being kind and respecting everyone. And the posters have different hashtags, because kids can relate to those more, because they see them more on like, social media. And the ribbon, so once everyone signs the banner and the contract, they'll get a ribbon. That pretty much signifies that they will not bully and that they'll be respectful and kind to everyone. So I really hope you enjoy the video.
Thank you.
These behaviors include relational, physical, verbal, written, or electronic communication, also known as cyberbullying. More than one out of every five students report being bullied. Many people are bystanders and never speak up or tell the teacher. This video is to raise awareness of bullying. This is the Rise Up Project partnering with students and staff of East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School, along with One Voice. As you watch this video, please think about how your actions could help or harm someone. Hope you enjoy
You never look good trying to make someone else look bad.
It's not about falling down, it's about getting back up.
What word comes to mind when you think about bullying?
Disgusting, hurtful, stop.
Where do you think bullying prevention starts?
At home.
Parents and early school.
At home. I think that parents have a responsibility to teach their children to be respectful of all people.
Have you ever been bullied? If so, how, and how did it make you feel?
I have a 12-year-old cousin who has been bullied because of her mental, mental handicaps, and it, it makes me very, very upset and mad that she has to go through that.
So I was definitely bullied in high school, by people who I think were jealous, but at the time I wasn't able to recognize that. And it was painful. It was difficult for me to understand why people could be so mean.
When I was younger, kids would pick on me and give me a hard time. It was difficult to go through. It made me angry and upset.
How do you feel about bullying?
It's awful, and I think that the schools and home and parents can do more about it.
I really hate that bullying happens, and it's tough to see as an adult and know that really great kids have to go through such a hard time because of-
Nobody deserves to be bullied.
How do you feel about bullying?
Not great. It's something that I actively try to stop and get my students to stop.
I think that it's just as sad for the person that's bullying as well as the person that's being bullied.
I think bullying is something that needs to come to an end. I think it's unfair. I think it's poor treatment of your peers, your classmates.
Have you ever seen anyone being bullied, and if so, can you give an example?
I have seen people get bullied, unfortunately. My sister was one of those victims, and I didn't really know what to do at the time, but it, it made me feel really sorry for her.
When I was riding a bus, and the way that people were talking about one person I was on the bus as well, and it was a very sad situation.
So it was difficult to watch, because I was a kid. I wouldn't have expected to participate in something like bullying. And it was tough to watch them do that to, to another student in the school.
What is one way we can prevent bullying?
We all need to be kind. We all need to stick up for each other and sort of pat each other's backs when we see some bullying going on. We have to speak up and let that person know what you're doing wrong.
To just be kind and accept people for who they are. Taught what it was and helped the kids who we thought would be bullies, they would understand.
You should be nice to everybody. Try to be as nice as you possibly can.
Practice kindness.
What do you think about kindness?
Kindness is an encouraging word, helping hand, or positive action that brings joy to another.
Kindness to me means taking time to offer somebody a random compliment, even if you don't know them that well, just to see somebody else smile.
When I think of kindness, open hearts and open minds.
And I rise up, I rise like the day. I rise up, I rise unafraid. I rise up, and I do it a thousand times again. And I rise up, I like the waves. I rise up, in spite of the eight times.
So as you can see, we have many talented young people in our school, and with leaders like Beth, she's the ones that will reach out to so many and be so kind to everyone. And that's what we're looking for in our school. The last page that I had added was as a vice principal, obviously I deal with bullying issues all the time. And as we go through this, one of the biggest pieces is obviously that students don't like to rat out other students. And so until we can get those parents and those students to give up this information, it is a long-term process. So as we go through this for the next few years, I always include, and I ask the kids, what type of bully is that person with these six different types that you will see? And, you know, what, what do they see when things take place? And the value of not being a bystander, because I often feel that the bystanders are just as guilty for not helping and standing up to those people that are being bullied. So I look forward to conquering this to the best that we can here in our district. And if anyone ever has any questions or is, you know, a concerned parent, please make sure that they reach out and feel free to talk to us.
That was excellent.
Thank you very much.
Nicely done, Beth.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that our SROs are here tonight, and they came to support Beth and to support the One Voice campaign. Cecilia Cacciatore is part of the coalition. Talitha Connor, our SRO, really working on this bullying, as well as the assistant principals, and the principals, and the teachers. It takes, again, I've said it a thousand times, I'm going to keep saying, it takes a village to raise a child. And it doesn't matter, we need to be respectful when we speak to each other. We need to make sure that this doesn't- sure that this doesn't go on in our school community, you know? And the way we, the way we treat each other, the way we talk to each other, we need to model for our students, and we also need to model for each other. Beth, that was very nicely done. You got a lot of kids involved, and I think that's, that's the really neat thing of this. You went outside of your world and got other kids involved, and I think that was great. It takes initiative. You know, you, you raised up, you know, to this occasion, and you did it. And you got other kids involved. And maybe the Noys can get it on the morning TV screens all over the building, and in the cafeteria, maybe tomorrow, you know, you're going to start it Monday. Tuesday, you might want to do it in the cafeteria tomorrow, or Monday, and so the kids can start to see the video and, you know, appreciate what we have to offer each other, because we're all going to be part of the solution. And I know that I can speak a little bit for Tyletha and Cecilia. They really work with the kids as this as well. That's what they're here for. They don't want to see the bullying, they don't want to see the fighting, they don't want to see the arguing. So they're working on this campaign, along with Chief Allen and the entire community in East Bridgewater. But this is, this is a, this is a big move for us, and I think to get the kids, this is a student-initiated campaign, which I think is terrific. You know, Susan Silva's been terrific with us with the coalition and EB Hope, and everybody's working together. And this is one, you know, it's one, one step towards getting better. So, thanks again, Beth, and thank you to the, our SROs who came tonight just to support the initiative. It's nice to see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
In an, excuse me, in an email, so Teresa had asked, you asked for the bullying to be, which I knew bullying was coming up, so I knew it was going to be today's meeting. You had also mentioned something about our bullying policy. So the bullying policy, we voted on last year, but if, I wanted to just mention that if there's anything that you, that you thought after you reviewed the policy, if you think there's something that you think needs to be changed, or whatever, just bring it forward, because, so most of the policy would follow Mass General law, and I don't have the policy in front of me, but if there's anything that you think that we need to change or tweak or whatever, just bring it forward.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. John Phelan. I hope I said that correctly. Director of Special Education, welcome.
My presentation's not going to be anywhere near as dynamic as that one you just saw, or as powerful by any means. Absolutely. I was kind of hoping now that I went first this evening. So just to touch on bullying for a moment as well, in the Special Education Department, we address bullying through the IEP. Anytime a student has a disability, it is a piece that we have to discuss as a team. We have to look at it, and look at whether the student would be susceptible to bullying, how it could be handled, and how it could be addressed within the, within the IEP. So there are pieces that we handle there. Tonight, I'm just going to give you a kind of a quick overview of the Special Education Department up to this point, and if there are any questions after that, I'll be glad to answer any. As far as the Special Education Department here in East Bridgewater, we do have a continuum of services that range across all the grade levels. Currently, we have inclusion services in the general education setting, direct special education services in smaller, separate settings, and therapeutic classrooms and access programs at each of the levels. We have a language-based program that goes from the Mitchell all the way up through the junior senior high here, where currently, currently we have 442 students on IEPs in the district. That's about 19% of our population. It's a little higher than, than the average in the state of Massachusetts. We're working to address some of that as we, as we go, but we're looking at what our kids' needs are, and how do we best service our kids in the district across the board.
Just real quick, how many kids out of all those IEPs, how many of those involve bullying?
Of, of...
Guesstimate.
Probably a rough guesstimate, we might have, we might have a 5% that really address bullying specifically. Many of our students that, that deal with bullying topics are students who are on the spectrum, autism spectrum, sort of. Partly because sometimes it, it's difficult for them to understand the communication, so what they take sometimes is maybe a joke, or they let go, may potentially be bullying. But we address it in the, in the classrooms, we address it day-to-day, it's addressed by our general education teachers, by our, by our, our guidance counselors, our special education teachers, and it's kind of on a regular basis addressed, as well as the support of, of our SROs, and, and now based on that, we're going to look at support all around from everybody, including the kids, and that's great. I think that's great.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no problem, no problem at all. And in the district, we're also very lucky to have a pretty active CPAC, or Special Education Parent Advisory Council. They do a very nice job working as a resource for parents and guardians of children with disabilities. They also take part in our, in our basic rights training at the beginning of the year. They're, they're very supportive of the program, and they work on a regular basis. And I invite anybody who would like to join them. Our next meeting's April 4th at 11:00. Come on in, join us. We'll be in the Student, Specialized Services, or Student Services conference room. Are there any questions?
Jay, what do you see as the biggest challenges right now for the Special Ed Department?
Well, I, I think one of the bigger challenges that we have now is really something we touched on earlier, and that's the, the emotional disabilities that are coming through. You know, it's a community-based item, it's not just here in East Bridgewater, it's across, at least the Commonwealth that I know of. I mean, I talk to friends of mine who are not only special educators, but, but regular educators in other districts, and they're facing the same thing. You know, school social workers, no matter what district you're in, are overwhelmed. It seems to be something that's on a regular basis coming across in every community.
And we don't even have those.
No, no, we will have some interns though, next year.
We have interns, but we need more, do you agree?
Oh, every district you talk to, I'm sure the superintendents can say the same thing. If you talk to anybody in any district, they can always use more. You know, it, it really is, is an epidemic that's coming across, and how do you address some of these, some of these emotional issues? Emotional is kind of an umbrella in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that's tough, because it covers everything from true, a true mental health issue, it could cover anything from bipolarism, and true mental health issues through somebody who's got some anxiety, somebody who's got some, some other issues to work on.
And do you, do you see sped law kind of catching, eventually catching up to kind of this umbrella that we're now seeing? I mean, I mean, I, I know from personal experience, I know from a lot of other parents, that the emotional side is really huge right now in terms of kids struggling.
Yeah, absolutely. I hope it catches up. I mean, unfortunately, I don't control law.
No, I'm just, in your conversations with your colleagues and whatever, are you seeing a push in that direction?
I, I think a lot of the Special Ed directors are kind of in the same position we're in as a district, and their districts are in the same boat. You're always looking for more, you're always looking for more, more support, more help, as we communicate with the department, and we communicate, of education, we communicate with the, with our representatives. As much as they'd like to help, I think, I think it's just so, so community-based. You know, what do you do in the community to help out, as well as what do you do in schools to help out? What do you do, you know, it's just, and it's financially tied.
Do you think the KIN program has been helpful?
Which, I'm sorry?
The KIN program?
I think it's great. I mean, it's, it's phenomenal here. I mean, I've worked in other districts, this is my third district as well, like Karen was saying earlier, and we didn't have it in those districts. I mean, it was hit or miss. Now, now, when we come in the morning, we know that somebody's in need, somebody needs supports, teachers can support them. I mean, everybody from, from our school resource officers to our superintendent, all the way through to our teachers and our TAs can support the student. You know, you know that somebody needs something, kind of give them a little extra space, what do they need today? How can we help them today? And we stay in constant communication, so the KIN program, to me, is phenomenal. I mean, it, this is something new to me, so I'm, I'm loving every minute of it, to help kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would take a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from February 28th, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Seconded by Gordon, all in favor?
Aye.
And at this time, I would take a motion to approve the Council Payable Warrant 38V dated March 13th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
By Teresa, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
And I would take a motion to approve payroll warrant 37P yesterday, March 6th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Teresa, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Superintendent had something?
I've got two, I've got two in your packet, I got a, for discussion purposes, someone had written in for land to purchase. Back, that's just, it came to me in correspondence. He also sent me some information today, so, but that would go directly to the town, just, but I, once it comes to me, I give it to you. I also, yeah, just one, it's just, I figured I would show everybody that he emailed. Ellen, this was a late entry, but I'd like to ask for this. I would like to recommend that Michelle DeSilva be granted retroactive personal day for Monday, February 25th, due to an unexpected death in her family that was not covered under Article 12 bereavement leave. This request extended a vacation, therefore the school committee will need to rule on the validity under Article 11 of the professional contract. I...
Absolute motion to approve.
I, I'll ask.
Do you have the no buy?
Well, it's already, it's retroactive, so, it happened. I just had them send that up so that we could...
Mrs. DeSilva's my daughter's preschool teacher, so I think I have to abstain, but I think we should do it.
So I would take a motion to approve.
Already did it.
Second.
Moved by Teresa, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Do you need this back?
Let me put it in my packet. Thanks.
At this time, I would take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Teresa, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a good night.
Happy St. Patty's Day, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.